Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, January 16th. We'll call the Wright County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. On this very chilly Tuesday morning, I think it's right now, what, five below with a wind chill of about 20 below. We'll get started here with the minutes from January 2nd. In the workshop of January 9th, we can approve these minutes collectively or individually. I will stand for any edits or modifications.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Okay, under the 1224 minutes, and I'll just refer to it as 3A, and it was a correction that I did to the minutes, and it, I had it typed out, but somebody did some editing, so I'm gonna add a little bit that will be less heartburn hopefully on whoever didn't like it. But second paragraph, it talks about the board was advised by the county. What could be inserted there, what I'd like inserted is to finish the thought of why I wanted legal advice, and it's gonna be, I'll call it, we were advised that this was an ineligible use of the money. So I'd like that inserted, as to why I was looking for legal advice on if the payment should be continued or needed to stop immediately. So that's all I got there.
I'm comfortable with that, with it stating that as long as the initial advice was recanted or was, because we were misadvised originally of that, of the information. So make sure that it wasn't, that we're not paying a petition, that we were advised that it was that way when ultimately when they came back, it was like, no, we got better clarification on it, so.
Right, and but that was, you know, removed from my correction, but it still remains in quotes, so it really isn't my quote anymore. So that's why today I'm just gonna insert language that's more acceptable after clarification, that we can just say, based on being advised that it was an ineligible use of the money. So with that, I'll approve the minutes with that correction from the board meeting.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
And Mr. Chair.
Motion passes unanimously. Yes.
Okay, on the workshop then, number two, just based on feedback, and I mentioned it to you, the constituents are calling about the flag and the seal, and if the board's gonna take a position on it, and there's apparently a letter that's ready to go, or is that?
Yeah, we'll discuss that here as the agenda items. I'll put, I'll petition on a quick discussion for you.
Okay, then I'll approve those workshop minutes from 19 to 24.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark to approve the workshop minutes from January 9th.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Workshop minutes approved unanimously. Today's agenda, I'm going to add to today's agenda under items for consideration, a brief discussion in making sure that there is collective approval of the letter regarding the state flag and state seal for one item for discussion. A second item for discussion under, which will be B1 for the flag, seal discussion letter, and then it'll be B2, I'm going to petition on a brief discussion on the appointment to the cannabis moratorium committee. There's an internal shifting here among the board, so that'll be item B2. Is there any other things that need to be added to the agenda today? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Holland to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Motion, agenda's approved unanimously. Today's consent agenda, would anyone like to remove anything from today's consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Item B is a boy three, the budget amendment report for discussion.
B3?
Right.
All right.
And I'll make a motion and accept the consent agenda with that one item removed for discussion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark to approve today's consent agenda with the removal of item B3.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Today's consent agenda is approved minus B1, or B3. B3 is now up for discussion. I will, I'm assuming Heather or Lindsay will make their way to the podium to answer any questions that board members may have. Floor is yours, Commissioner Catchmark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I got this, looked at it end of last week and talked to third floor staff as time allowed, but they were working on other projects, and we were working throughout the day, getting responses from them. I'll just, looking at the report, page one here, it looks like a good start to what happened. My questions, what I got it narrowed down to are, okay, there was money moved from one fund to another. In a lot of cases, it was 60 something to 60 something. And it just, it looks like there was money, and that's tax levy dollars, that moved from one fund to another that were allocated for another reason. So I'm just, I'm wondering if finance and the budget team is keeping an eye on these items as far as trends to see if, is this ongoing that there's always extra money and then it conveniently can be sent somewhere else? I'm kinda looking for the pattern there. They explained some of the individual moves that made sense, and then I, I got one this morning that was sent over the weekend that I didn't catch, so I didn't have time, but a couple of them, like these highway ones with lost funds, those ones I can figure out on my own. So I guess that's my question is, a little more description as to why this money was available in its, from its original place to move someplace else is kinda what I wanted to discuss.
Okay, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. We're starting to get through this budget process, and we're starting to see trends, as Commissioner Catchmark had said, but it's a learning process as we get through this. I know Chad had discussed and sent you an email about the leftover funds. He was gonna make it. There he is. Do you have a question on that specific item, or?
No, not, Mr. Chair, not on those specifically, and that I got this morning at 8 o'clock, so I had responded, I didn't have time to really look into it or talk to anyone. It's more some of these others that, I mean, the last thing I can figure out, but just in general, I just wanna draw attention for the finance and budget team to see, is there patterns here of money being, you know, stored that we historically haven't used, but if we need it somewhere else, it's conveniently available. It seems like, and I'll defer to fellow board members here, but it would seem like if we ran a little tighter, that there was less extra money, there would be a process to actually come forward and say, you know, we don't have the money, we gotta appeal to the general fund per se, instead of having extra pots here and there per se.
And this is something we're just starting to monitor as we get further into the process, as we, this is one of the benefits of Oracle, and before we didn't have so much detail of what was left over. So we'll start monitoring trends.
Okay, so how often do we see these again? Is it quarterly?
These are monthly.
Monthly?
Yep.
So next month, now hearing what maybe there's others that are concerned as I am, but will this get maybe cleaned up a little bit starting next month, or?
Yep, I reached out to the budget analyst earlier and told her we would like to see more detail and more of a description on these, so we, she's gonna make that change for next month.
And then at this year's budget meetings and all that process, then you'll look at the trend individually, which, which I've done in the past, and I've had help to say, okay, this is a little off. Why will you never use this much? Do you continue to ask for this much? But you're all gonna take a closer look at that, see how that applies to this. All right, Mr. Chair, that's it. I just wanna draw attention because, like I said, it's a good start, but you just, I'm wondering why that's available in all these instances, okay?
All right. Good discussion. I, was one question that I was gonna ask was one on the, and I see Chad's back there on the 230 from the easement right of way to the professional services, and then at the end of the year, I'm guessing they prepaid for maybe some contractual professional services into 2024, or they reconciled the contract that they didn't have enough money within their internal budget. Pardon me? Yeah, if you, yeah.
Good morning, everyone. So, yeah, we transferred 230,000 from easement, basically right of way to engineering, and in general, where we're starting in June, July, doing budgeting in 2022, looking at 2023, we're looking four to 17 months out. And in general, what we start, our starting point is on a reconstruction project where, you know, in general, your soft costs are 20 to 25 percent. That includes everything. And so we looked at our projects, said, okay, you know, and we've split between right of way engineering and testing and everything else, and then two major things in this in 2023 is, we took the intersection at 25 and 83, that was supposed to be last year, and then we broke out Braddock separately, and we delivered that a year earlier. So we had the engineering and testing with that project, and then the right of way in general was under for 23 for lost, because we didn't get to buy any right of way handover yet, because that process to determine what the actual scope of the project was took longer than expected. So one option is, you know, we could always just pull directly from lost, leave right of way where it's at, and then at the end of the year, it just goes back into lost. I mean, it's rather than take it from that account, but we figured we'll just keep it within the same budget year. So like I said, the nice part of a loss, it doesn't go into general, it just goes right back, and whatever we don't spend just goes right back to that account. So, and we can definitely provide more detail next time. You know, we were in a rush to get some invoices paid, so we could have provided finance more detail, and we'll do that going forward.
No problem. I appreciate the explanations. It makes sense, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, someone has another question. I'll make a motion to approve those budget amendments for December 23.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item B3 is approved unanimously. Now moving on to the timed agenda items, we have Alicia O'Hare from Soil and Water here to approve the Wright County Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention and Management Plan for 2024 through 2028.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Alicia O'Hare with Wright Soil and Water. I just wanted to talk a little bit about invasive species here, and just for any of you who might not be familiar with AIS, as I will refer to them, aquatic invasive species. They are species that are not native to Minnesota and cause harm to economic prosperity, the environment, and human health. So very prevalent example of these is zebra mussels. They proliferate onto docks and lifts and cause problems in water intakes. They'll cut your feet. So just as an example, a couple of examples of why species like this are detrimental to Minnesota's waters. The state legislature recognized that in 2014 and established a item in the general budget of $10 million that is distributed among the counties. Wright County's share of that is about $240,000 annually. That pays for our AIS inspection program to check boats, docks, and lifts for invasive species, treatment programs, decontamination station, and more. That is given directly to the county first, and then it goes to Soil and Water, who actually administers the program. As part of this, we have this AIS management plan. It was originally developed in 2015. It was updated in 2017, and then I'm here today to update it again. This was a fairly significant update. It's just, it was a learning curve, and then a lot has changed in the last six years. So we took the plan, and then I tried to take a little, the One Watershed One Plan Comprehensive Management, Water Management Plans, I kinda took a page out of their book to, for the structure of it, identifying our goals and then the strategies of how we're gonna do it. So the purpose of this plan is to say, here are our strategies that we wanna go forward with for the next five years in how we're gonna combat aquatic invasive species and the source of funding that will come from it. It is primarily that state fund, but the SWCD contributes in kind for staff time, as well as several local interest groups like lake associations do contribute to the actions for aquatic invasive species as well. It was publicly available, so just real quick about the process. We had a survey that allowed residents to, and other people who recreate in Wright County to talk about how they prioritize AIS and how they saw them as a issue in Wright County. We took that into consideration for writing the plan. I created a draft which went through the AIS committee, which includes two county commissioners, two SWCD staff, and some local interest groups, reviewed the plan, and then we released it for public comment. So it was available for public comment for 30 days. You have a list of those comments, and the indicated responses is part of the packet as well. So now it is here for final approval. I will certainly entertain any questions that you have on the plan itself.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to comment. I really just love the way you put this together, and it's really data-driven. That was one thing I really, we've targeted ours for inspections and for decontamination, and as well as the partnerships that you work with, with all the lake associations, and just everyone involved to address aquatic invasive species, which has a huge impact in Wright County with all their lakes and rivers running through. So thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome.
I think for board members, one important thing to point out is the funding that we get around 238, 240,000 is a relatively linear number over the last decade, and the buying power that we have with that has diminished greatly over the last decade. Between the cost of treatments and the cost to do inspections, we're probably seeing about 30 percent buying power loss over the last 10 years with the, with that 238 to 240,000. I think that's probably one of the biggest key points to pull out of this management plan. As we, without new funding sources, we are continually having to use this management plan to decide how to allocate these scarce funds, because deciding between treatment and inspections, especially the inspections this last year, we had to have a very frank discussion as to can we afford to even treat curly leaf anymore, because the cost of doing starry stonewort and milfoil were so high that something has to give in that aspect, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And thanks again for coming in today, Alicia. So I'm wondering about these lake associations or lakes that don't have associations. Are there ever conversations to say, if you wanted more, you know, if you did form a lake association, this would be available to you, you'd be able to fund it? Because I've had conversations about the ditches going through lakes and all that, and they don't always wanna subscribe to that, but is there any movement to get more lake associations or lake improvement districts that would maybe be able to help with this?
It is always a topic of discussion, and I'm certainly willing to help lake associations and lake improvement districts move forward with this. They tend to save their money for the treatment of the aquatic invasive species as opposed to inspections. If that's, I'm not sure if that's what you were referring to, but generally, their first priority is the treatment of the species that exist in there. And that is also part of the reason that we have adjusted our inspection strategy to be, we concentrate it to the lakes that are the most risky, those that have zebra mussels and starry stonewort and are very popular. But then we also sporadically are out there checking other landings, even if they're not the most popular. I mean, you don't just do, you know, check the speeds of people on the main highways. You might concentrate on those efforts, but occasionally you go to some of the slightly other roads just to make sure that people aren't, you know, violently, you know, speeding off there and causing a dangerous situation. So that's some of the adjustments that we made to try to add that fairness to it, just to make sure that we're still checking some of those areas, and there is availability for anyone to purchase inspections for their lakes, and we usually try to add at least a little to those lakes as we can, and we are continuing to offer our treatment grants as well.
So the vast majority of the lakes in Wright County, their lake associations, cost share in the treatment cost, they do have money into it, so I would say that's upwards of 80 percent of the lakes that get treatment have some cost share on it. Would I say that's about an accurate number?
I think so, but we do issue our treatment grants to every single lake that we have a contact for. That has always been the struggle is maintaining the contacts, because they tend to shift whether, you know, who's the treasurer this year? I don't know, I'm not at all those meetings, but we try to at least send the information to every lake association to make sure that they know about our program, so they can have an opportunity to receive funding.
And then there's about another 10 lakes that purchase individualized inspection hours on top of that that we use out of these funds. So the majority do not cost share or purchase additional inspection hours, but vast majority of them have their individual money from their lake associations into the treatment cost, so.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, those, I believe it's about seven lakes that do cost share on the inspection program, they double the size of our inspection programs. I just want to highlight that, that they, it's those lakes, but they are the, they are very popular lakes as well, so they are good places to do inspections, and the, just, I don't wanna understate the amount of energy and money that they put into, into this issue.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll be looking forward to get a motion to approve the management plan, just to start with.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion, and I just wanna add, we also agreed moving forward with some educational piece that we'll be supplying or working with all the lakes for self-cleaning tools that will be signage and education, and so that they'll be, be able to utilize those tools going in or leaving the lake. So I just, that was an addition that we added, and it was a really good idea. So all of the lakes will have some kind of, of education and the tools to help prevent the spread.
Thank you.
And I'll second that resolution.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland, for the approval of the invasive species prevention and management plan and the aquatic invasive species prevention aid. All right, with that, it's a resolution. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Catchmark?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the 920 timed agenda item, Lindsay Meyer, for the board chair, signature on the change order to continue with the Oracle Support Services through 1231, 2024.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board. What you have in front of you is a request for an amendment to our original support master services agreement. We did budget the 114,000 in the 2024 year, so during the budget process, we had discussed this, that my team would likely need an amount of money, and we had agreed collectively that 114,000 would likely suffice. What this agreement is for is, in the event that we have support that we need, where, for example, a ticket has been entered, we can't internally figure it out with our staff members, then we enter a ticket and request support from the Sierra Cedar team to maintain the system. This also incorporates previously in our agreement, only the quarterly updates for the ECM, the financial side of it, and now that we've gone live on the HCM, the payroll HR type modules, the additional fee is another 7,500 per update. So it's an additional 30,000 above and beyond what we had originally anticipated for the quarterly updates. That is all encompassed within this 114,000 change order.
Question, so it's basically, you're just doing à la carte now for Sierra Cedar, or do we still have them?
It has been before. That's what this specific agreement is for. Just, it's an as-needed basis.
Okay.
And it's only time and materials, so if we don't use up to that 114, we're not gonna be billed for it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, thanks, Lindsay. I think that's a good plan to kinda scale back all the pro services on this. So like this, 23, I think we had 1.7 million into this for all these consultants, so that's going away, and it's reduced to 114,000. Is that right?
Different agreements entirely. The agreement that you're referring to is for our implementation services.
Are we, is that staying the same rate?
That, we are now live, so we are at the tail end of that agreement, just wrapping up with what they call is hypercare, just additional, higher level of support as we go live.
So the majority of the 1.7 million is gone, right?
Yep.
We don't need it in 24.
Correct.
And we're gonna be reduced to 114,000 potentially max in 24.
For ongoing support and maintenance.
Right.
Correct.
Because you have three buckets.
Yes, we've got, we've got our phase one implementation costs, which is over and done. We are on phase two, wrapping that up now. We have discussed with Sierra Cedar that for our hypercare period or our higher level of support post-go-live, we are kind of breaking that up into two separate spots, areas, buckets. One for the payroll HR, which is, has gone live now, but then we've also asked them to hold off on that hypercare for the budgeting. for the budgeting, since we are not actively using it for another couple of months. We've asked them to hold off on that, and they're going to provide us that higher level of support when we start using that module actively.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think that makes sense, and that's better to hear than the past amounts. I mean, you needed it, but still, it's a big difference from 1.7 to 100,000.
Now that we're live, we only need the, the support and maintenance at this point.
Okay. So just kind of to overview a little bit, like the 1.7 is kind of the, what I'm going to classify as kind of like the purchasing cost, because that's the
Yes.
Integrating it's the manipulating it to meet Wright County needs. So then you have the technical support contract, which is that 114 is the, I don't know how this works. How do you help me? That piece of it. And then you have a third bucket, which I'm going to say is your project management bucket, which is also kind of coming to an end, which was that Tony Coflow?
Coflow, yes.
Yes, okay. That, that person is kind of the in-between of all those different aspects, county staff, the implementing team, the tech support team, and tying all that together. So we still have a little bit left of that integrating that 1.7, which they're calling it the hyper care, because we haven't started doing budgeting yet. We don't know where the technical issues are. So we might need to have them do some different programming changes because we haven't delved into that yet. So those are the three kind of buckets that we're at. So right now, we're talking purely about the technical support bucket, bucket, and that they're estimating a cost of about 114,000 for this next year for technical support for the entire phase one and phase two of ERP.
Yes. This is for the whole system. That was a good summary. Thank you.
Chair, if I could say, thank you, guys. It was a stressful week, I know, for you guys. I think Friday was really stressful, from what I've heard. You guys deserved a three-day break. But thanks for all the work you did. We really appreciate it, and we saw it, and just want to congratulate you on getting it through, getting through it.
Thank you for that recognition. They put in, they put in the effort to get the job done.
Heather rolled in a cot here this weekend. I didn't, you know, I didn't hear of anything terrible that, you know, nobody got paid or anything. So.
Oh, no.
They, they had some late nights. They, they put in the effort to get it done.
Nice.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I just want to say thank you on that, too. And, and just a reminder that we knew, you know, there might be things that come up, and staff was prepared to address those. And then just to have a lot of grace for each other moving forward and, and just work towards the solutions. So thank you.
Look at that. Looks like there's going to be a department of the year nomination coming out of this.
There's been a lot going on.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve that ability for to sign that contract.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland. Second. Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. It looks like we have Chad. I don't think I see Virgil in the room, so Chad's going to make his way to the podium here. We have a few different resolutions to approve for the resolution to support the City of Monticello's Active Transportation Grant as the first item on there.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, we have two resolutions. The first one is City of Monticello is applying for active transportation grant. They are a state aid city. They can receive the money, but some of the trail sidewalk work is within our right of way. So they need a resolution of support to basically say that we're okay with the sidewalk being in our right of way.
I'll make the motion that we, does it approve the resolution of support for the City of Monticello's Active Transportation Grant?
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Resolution. Commissioner Shane?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Yep. Next item is another resolution for a MINDOT detour agreement. MINDOT has some work on US 12 in 2025. And it'll be a short portion of CASA 3 and 35 in Nemeeker County.
All right. Well, let's do number three first, and then we'll come back to the SRTS.
Oh, did I miss one?
No.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. It slid into another page. So we'll, but this is the detour resolution. Is there any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane to approve the MINDOT detour agreement, 1055397. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Resolution? Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously. Now, we have approved a resolution to support of the City of Monticello Safe Routes to School Sidewalk Gap Project.
Kind of the same story. You know, there will, there's a short, couple of short pieces on 39, I think 75 near the schools. And it's just to complete their project within our right of way.
That would be a nice project to actually get finished on.
You bet.
Yeah. All right. I'll make the motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Resolution. Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now Matt is making his way to the podium. We get to adopt the findings and orders for dismissal of petition for abandonment of County Ditch 16. This was an item that was brought forward to us two weeks ago.
Mr. Chair, I want to say we got this in early December.
Or something like that. Yeah, and everything blurs together.
Yeah. This one, we got in early December. And just so the board knows, on these first three items, you are acting in your capacity as the drainage authority for CD 16.
Everybody's putting their drainage authority hats on. All right. So is there any discussions on this? This was from back in that December meeting for the petition that we had for the abandonment. There was no justification for us to be able to grant. That was kind of the order that was, we directed staff at that time to draft findings for denial or dismissal. So at this time, we're just formally looking to adopt that.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Is that, this now communicated back to the petitioners for this?
Yes, I can. I believe you received the original email, and we could respond to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dietrich, we are also going to be mailing copy of this order to all benefit of landowners along the drainage system. So everyone will get a copy of it. That's in bullet point two of the order, or I guess bullet point B, paragraph B of the order section.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thanks, Matt. Now, there was an appeal process for everything. Is that attached also in the notification to the folks that if you don't like this, you can do this?
I, I don't think they can appeal this. It didn't meet the minimum qualifications.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Catchmark, you can always appeal everything, even if they fail us, Matt. I mean, there's always a process. But the, the appeal process is laid out in statute. We don't have to notify them of it. They, they can read the statute and follow that directive that's in there.
Okay. And I know you had the recommendation to draft findings so that they would have it kind of in a capsule if they want to look at it closer and, and appeal it. So I guess as long as there's at least a notification in there that says, here's the statute to look at if we don't spell it out, because we're the ones then that get, get the call to say, hey, how do I appeal this per se?
Well, we got to be careful because we would be treading on the area of offering potential legal advice at this point. So we want to be careful. Giving them the information at that point, they need to seek their own legal counsel. If we start putting things in general that your process to appeal is here, that is kind of in the area, because we do have attorneys on staff that we could be perceived as us giving them legal counsel.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Catchmark, some provisions of drainage law actually have appeal process stated in it, and others do not, which means that it goes underneath the general appeal process of a writ of certiorari to either the district court or the court of appeals. So I don't like to give out legal advice to people, because if we indicate one and we're incorrect, it can be held against us later on. So we're best just to say, go get your own attorney and figure it out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the findings and order for dismissal of petition for abandonment of County Ditch number 16.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next thing, next down there is to adopt the findings and orders, accepting the viewer's report, and accepting the redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 19. Uh, 16. Oh, 16. You're right. I'm sorry. So this one here is, we had the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, and we are now at the point to move forward with the adoption of these redetermination of benefits and viewer's report.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next would be the third item on there, adopt the findings and orders and authorize signatures on the notice of drainage system interest for County Ditch 16.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I can maybe explain what's going on here. Under the drainage code, we need to put something into the record, just notifying people that their parcel of property may have an interest in the drainage system. In talking with John Kolb, this is in the best practice of going forward when we do a redetermination of benefits to then notify all the new owners that are in the system that there may be something such as an assessment or something on a file with their quarter or their, the auditor's office that a property owner should come and look at during a title review or search. So this is just the best practice to putting people on notice that they should come and talk to us in the event their property is on this list.
I'll make that motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next would be to adopt the findings and orders for dismissal and petition of abandonment for County Ditch 19. This is kind of the same as the first one. This was one from back in December, same petition, or same, but separate.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, members of the board, now we're taking off our CD 16 hat and pointing on our CD 19 hat, just so you know, for the next three items. This is, in conjunction with the first resolution you did on County Ditch 16, this is kind of a joint petition for abandonment and staff, because these are different systems, treating them separately in the orders that we're mailing out.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, to adopt the findings for number four.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next would be adopt the findings and orders, accepting the viewer's report and adopting redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 19. Once again, same public, same date of the public hearing that took place a couple of weeks ago. We are finally adopting those findings that we directed staff to draft.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next would be adopt the findings and order to authorize signatures on notice of drainage system interest in County Ditch 19. Same as 16, putting it in the recorder's office for any future transfer of property.
I'll make, second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Shane, second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now, moving on to items for consideration. We will adopt all the numerous recommendations from the workshop on January 9. I think we went for a record there with, was it about a four and a half, five-hour workshop? Do, do board members want me to read off all the recommendations? Are there any recommendations that you want to discuss?
Mr. Chair, I would like to just pull number four for comment, please.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I, there's one I'm not going to go along with. I, I could make a motion for all of them except that one and number four initially here.
Okay. So we'll discuss three and four.
And then, then I'd make a motion to approve the rest, except for three and four.
All right. So that, again, a motion by Commissioner Catchmark to approve workshop recommendations minus item number three and four. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Dietrich. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, score funding distribution to cities and townships. Coming out of there, the recommendation was to continue, continue the current program as is through 2024, work the cities and townships to conduct a feasibility study that will guide the creation of a new program to implement in 2025. Finance will work with planning and zoning and administration to reconcile the shortfalls of the budget to complete the feasibility study and develop a new program and offset additional staffing needs.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a question. Can, for the record, have we confirmed with the MPCA that there won't be any consequence to Wright County if we continue paying what's been called ineligible, ineligible use for the money?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Catchmark, I don't believe it's an ineligible use. It's just not best practice of the use. So that's where we're implementing this change over a period of time. The MPCA, given that it's not a best practice, is not going to hold us negatively as a result of that.
And to my knowledge, if we're making actions to do something better even more so that they would do nothing, so.
Well, I just want to ask, because I know we've drawn attention from them in the past before I got here on this funding. So I wanted to clear that up.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Catchmark, they have not flagged it as an ineligible or illegal use. It's just simply a, they're simply better practices out there. And the MPCA, I, I know there's many members of the business community that would feel otherwise, but from a solid waste perspective, they're probably one of the best regulatory agencies to work with in the state. I, I think hopefully that came across during our workshop from a couple of months ago. But Heidi, the, the outstate workers on this regulatory stuff is solid waste, are absolutely some of the best to work with. And they're, they understand that changes in garbage take time, and they're very willing to work with us on that.
And for anybody in the public that's seeing this, and this change largely is coming from that the originality of, of this funding giving out to the cities and townships was to get reporting information to meet metrics and to be able to quantify the amount of recycled goods in the cities and township. But we have other reporting sources in the current time, so that the need to do that is no longer necessary. And with that being said, then it would, the MPCA would, I'm reading into it, the MPCA would like us to use that money elsewhere to leverage more, better use of the funds, since they don't want the money to be used for a duplication of information that we're already getting.
Yeah.
So with that, this, is there a?
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation for the score funding distribution.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify, Commissioner Holland, you're moving the entire recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. No other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes for one. All right. Next would be the economic development partnership presentation that would go to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to share my disagreement with tying appropriate, the county's appropriated funding to the quarterly reports from the EDP. The Wright County EDP has been a partner with Wright County for 30 years. Two commissioners are now appointed to the EDP board to communicate the economic priorities of the county. Every city in Wright County and 94 private businesses are members of the EDP, and Wright County should be leading, collaborating, and positively communicating with the EDP, not coercing it by the threat of withholding funds. My recommendation was, would be not to tie, in, in this, not to tie the funding to the quarterly reports. As there is no metric or threshold also identified with those reports, so it would be hard to determine exactly when those funds would be approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Dietrich. Any other discussion? No other discussion. At this time, I will entertain any motions for this item.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations without tying the appropriated funds to the quarterly reports.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich to alter the recommendation in removing the requirement of the funds receive approval on the April, August, and November prior to being sent to the EDP. funds receive approval on the April, August, and November prior to being sent to the EDP. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails for the lack of a second. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to the original economic development partnership, um, that it will be tied with the, with the funding.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Shane, second by Commissioner Holland, to approve the recommendation as stated in the uh, workshop minutes or recommendations. Is that correct? All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Recommendation passes for one. With that, that receives all of the board workshop recommendations are approved. Moving on to item B1 from items consideration, all of you, I distributed a letter that was created through administration. This is kind of a first draft, uh, working on articulating some of the costs and concerns that we have regarding the state seal and state flag. This is uh, largely um, a very generic one that's written out that we can use to, for legislative or as well as governor's office alike and others to articulate our concerns. I just wanted to let uh, the public know that we are taking a little bit of a stance, because we have concerns on a variety of different aspects, as well as uh, helping to articulate to the, making sure that the board is collectively in agreeance with these comments.
Mr. Chair, thanks for, I don't know who all drafted this, but I haven't had a chance, because I just got it. Can we take a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's good to address it here sooner than later. I got two calls late last week, wondering what kind of position, like I said, we're going to do. So if I can have a minute.
Mr. Chair, while he's reading, um, just a, just a additional comment to that. I've gotten feedback um, that a letter is a good start, um, but it was also encouraging us to send a resolution of where we stand um, to the state uh, in that regards to the changes and the cost to the county and its citizens and the process.
And uh, definitely open to that, that discussion, so if, if at some point we want to do that, we certainly can. We just would have to uh, put together a resolution, so um, we can have a discussion probably at a later date about that. But this is a, a good start and I wanted to make sure that everybody gets a chance to review this and we can certainly modify it outside of this meeting if we need to going forward. But I want to make sure that everybody has something uh, to share with their citizens, as well as people at the state office uh, about this move and the ramifications around it.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I, this was already a, a, an item that was approved already, so it's just an item for information at this point. The other item was item uh, B2, um, but Mike, we can come back to this if you have some comments afterwards, okay? Uh, item B2, there was the appointment of Commissioner uh, Catchmark and Commissioner Holland uh, to appoint to the cannabis uh, moratorium re, um, I'm going to call it research or uh, study group. Yep, whatever we call it, right? So with that, Commissioner Catchmark and I have had a discussion and he, uh, were interested in making a swap from himself to myself. Is that correct, Commissioner Catchmark?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I have had little to no feedback on this in my district. So apparently if they need cannabis, maybe they're finding their own ways to obtain it. I don't know. But uh, you've had others feedback, I think, more so. And I've heard it at the mayor's meeting too, that they were more interested in city involved to whatever degree. So it, it wasn't that we had to arm wrestle over it or anything, but uh, so I'm fine with you taking that.
All right, so that'll entertain a motion to make, formalize that uh, change.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Shane, second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And before we adjourn, I'm just going to follow back here with Commissioner Catchmark to see.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think, you know, it's still unanswered about, we haven't been informed how this is going to affect local government versus state. If we have state judges and other staff occupying our building, does it then become a state building where there's different rules? And then for some of these replacement items, do we have to, or maybe there's already uh, union contract language? If, if you're forced to make a change in your equipment, is there language that says the county will take that on versus employees? And that could be employees anywhere, but that's to be determined or decided, I guess. So I, you know, there's some unknowns in here. I, I don't want to uh, be too broad that this is going to be way more than it actually is. If we, if we find a way to take care of this ourselves and we're going to lessen the amount or if the statute doesn't say that we actually have to do this, that's what I want to just make sure that we get that research and don't depend on the state to just come with a big stick and say, you shall do this. Because I just, I haven't seen the back page to say, if you don't do this by this date, what's going to happen? Because our deputies are still going to be able to arrest people regardless of that logo on the badge.
Yeah, I think there's some ambiguity out there as to if you still are representing, whether it's on a deputy's badge or on a seal inside of a courtroom, whether, whether there will be and what would be the ramifications of having that being portrayed. That, that question can't be answered right now. I don't think anybody has that ability to answer that. I don't think the statute itself rendered itself any type of uh, punitive punishment or financial implications for doing so.
As long as we're as accurate as we can be at this point, I guess that's the main thing. In good faith, Attorney Crasil will appreciate that. In good faith, we're acting with these figures that we're not going to try and embellish, you know, the, inflate the numbers per se to make our case.
I, I think staff did a very good due diligence on this. We actually took a conservative lower number. We actually feel that in all actuality, this number will probably be higher than this. Uh, as we will, we're anticipating to see the price of replacing these items to probably uh, grossly inflate with the high demand and high volume. But we didn't factor that in. We just based it on uh, the numbers that we have at this current time. We also have concerns based on the timeline. If we had to do it by January 1 of 2025, how even achievable that is? That's another factor that we want to articulate in this letter, that that short runway is very unrealistic.
Mr. Chair, and unbudgeted.
Yeah, and unbudgeted. There, there's, there's numerous factors here. And for something that's driven in St. Paul and not here in Wright County, uh, this is a cost and a burden that I don't want to share on the citizens of Wright County. Uh, this is be something that the state should burden, if they should be burdening at all, but that's a very different discussion.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd approve the draft. I, I would ask the staff if we can get a clean copy as commissioners that we can hit forward to constituents when they ask, rather than me trying to convey the whole thing that's very easy.
I will send you electronic copy.
To hit forward when everything is done.
That will get sent to you uh, yet this morning.
Okay, then motion made.
All right, so actually we don't need to even make a motion. It was already approved in the recommendations from the workshop, so.
Okay.
With that, uh, if there's no other business to attend to today, we will adjourn the county board meeting at uh, 9:56. Please note that we have leadership at 10:30.